It's 7:30, this is the Littleton Zoning Board of Appeals. I'll call to, I'll open the hearing of case 795B, 15 Great Road LLC, on a request for modification of the 40B comprehensive permit at Village Green, 15 Great Road. The entire board is present with the exception of one of the alternates, Patrick Joyce, and we have with us the applicant, his legal counsel, his consultant, and other presenters for the applicant. And we have for the town, Town Council Christopher Heap, our consultant Ed Marshant, we have Keith Bergman, Town Administrator, Roland Bernier, the Building Inspector, and Jen Brownson, who is one of the selectmen. That's everybody. Okay, so what happened last week is that the applicant presented a request to modify the comprehensive permit at Village Green. The board was told on their initial reaction to some of these changes, and we then had a subcommittee meet to review the decision, some of the requested waivers, and to try to iron out those items of concern that need further discussion. So I think I'll start with board member questions about the project and the concerns that you've had a chance to think about, and then I'd like to maybe ask the applicant if they have any more to present. So let's start with board member questions.
I have some.
Okay, sure.
Concerns. I went back to the original plan that was approved by Housing Authority back in 2011, May of 2011, and at the time we were concerned with the size of the larger buildings and their height. And I gotta tell you, they are nothing compared to what you're proposing now. They're much smaller, they're much shorter. We talked about in this forum, in this committee all the time, we talk about, Mr. Farnsworth is particularly good about reminding us that our personal taste should not be our governing factor or our problem. We are supposed to, we are zoning board of appeals. We are here for when the zoning bylaws don't fit a particular case. But it is our job to pay attention to those zoning bylaws and to try to make them, whatever we're doing, fall within them as much as possible. The height for residential buildings in the town of Littleton is 32 feet. The buildings you are proposing are 53 feet. Now, one of my problems and concerns is, I understand Phase 1 and Phase 2, that they are a lot more economically feasible to build these individual condominium townhouses. They'll be a lot easier, cheaper to build, and a lot easier to sell. But for them to, for you to concentrate all the other units into three enormous rental units is far out of keeping as of the town, and even the original design is far approved by what? I have no problem with it. I don't think it's nearly as much in keeping as the town is even the original. And we did extensive sightwalks with the original, we flew, we checked the heights with balloons. Your buildings proposed here are 53 feet taller than the original ones that we showed so much concern with, and they're so much more denser. It's, I have concerns. And even with the, I mean, this is a small matter, but even with your landscaping plan and the plan of the buildings, you show a large storm drain basin right next between you and one of your neighbors, and then the landscaping plant, you have trees planted in it for shielding for her. So I don't understand how those two things work, and I think we need to have a sightwalk, and I think we need to have at least a crane showing us the height of the buildings, and I think we need to take into consideration the fact that there is so much change in the other parts of this that should be so much more economically feasible, that surely even a three-story building can afford an elevator, and can afford, and these buildings could be wider, or there could be four of them, or there could be other changes made to keep the height from being almost double of what our zoning board, our town zoning allows. And that's a major concern I have and a problem I have with this design. This is far, this is far more different from our zoning than even your original plan back in May of 2011.
Thank you. Do you want to? I'd like the board to continue.
Can I ask questions or follow up on?
Yeah.
What was you said? In regards to the height of the building, first of all, zoning does mimic state building code. Height for residential set of three stories, certain height, because of the ability of local fire departments. They do increase when you get into apartment buildings and whatever else. And again, it all goes back to the premise, the way the building codes and fire prevention codes are set up, the ability of the local fire department to be able to handle. That being said, my question for the concern on the height of the building, is it because of aesthetics? Is it because that, you know, it's gonna be out of character with the neighborhood that it's in? Is it gonna be the concern that the building is gonna be too tall, that's gonna block off the views or the amenities of local surrounding properties or residential properties? In this case, it's actually down next to the shopping mall and a business community, so out of the, you know, just the height because it's a height? What is the concern or the hesitation that, you know, 53 feet is not viable?
Our zoning bylaws, as much about aesthetics and what the town of Littleton has voted for our aesthetics for our town as it is our fire prevention. And, you know, whether it is my taste or your taste to have a 70-foot building, or a 50-foot building, or say that anything over 32 feet just isn't permissible, have to, as you have told us many times, have to pay attention to what the town of Littleton residents have voted and have, and have decided. And while we are here to override those, and it agreed to override those with the original permit we granted, this just seems more egregious and more different than what we, out of keeping of the area. Also, you talked about those being commercial buildings. Those commercial buildings down there are very much only two-story buildings. They're, they're limited by the town of Acton in their height to two stories. And so, I know, I know that Avalon up above has three-story buildings. I don't know if they have any four-story buildings.
They have.
Do they up there?
They have like five or six-story buildings.
Do they?
Yeah.
Well, this is right down, right at the quote gateway of our town, and it is right there, and they are very visible from the main drag, they're very visible from those stores, they're very visible from the people around. And I'm worried about the height, indeed blocking views, and indeed, I mean, it's set down in a valley, it may not be a problem. But I would like to do a sightwalk, and I'd like to see exactly how high those buildings are. And I'd like to walk up on, up here on Grist Mill and see what I see. And, you know, maybe it's not a concern. Maybe they are set down so far in that valley, and there's such a difference with that ridge, that I'm, it, it wouldn't be egregious and it wouldn't be a problem. But I have concerns.
You're near the fire prevention end of it though.
I understand.
Well, as far as indication from the fire department, it's not an issue.
No, that's not the concerns I was raising. I was raising concerns of our zoning bylaws, and even though we override them, we pay attention. Oh, anybody else?
We haven't gone through the waivers or... So at some point, we need to go through them.
We can, let's, item by item, one, let's give our feedback from...
Yeah. Yeah, my biggest concern is building three being converted from apartments to condos, and the impact it would have on the inventory. I don't think that should be granted. I think they need to come back when they want to make the conversion. And at that time, I think we need to assess what the inventory is. Because originally, we had a very large inventory, brought us up to, what, 13% or so? And now we're talking about potentially being just barely over 10%. And I don't want to suddenly find out we're below 10% in 2020 and have to go through more permits.
I have comments about the affordable units of the houses, but to Rod's point, I was wondering if, could we put a timeframe on conversion? Could we have it converted after the 2020 census? So even if we did go below 10%, for whatever reason, it wouldn't occur, you know, we'd have a 10-year period. I don't know if that's possible, but it might be a compromise. I'm concerned about the disposition of the affordable houses. I'm, you know, we, if we, if, if the board thinks about Kimlock, you know, which is the last 40B we approved, where we had, where the developer wanted to build large homes, and he, you know, as part of the 40B built large homes for everyone, for the affordables and for the, well, basically for the affordables. Now, I'm not sure if this calls for that type of approach, but you have clearly, I hate to use the word ghettoized, but, you know, the affordable plans you're providing are clearly smaller. And they seem to be concentrated. And I guess what I would say is, if you are building these plans for buyers, I don't know if I would have a problem, although I think they are a little small. But I don't see that happening. I mean, the way these developments usually work is that to make the most money, you have to sell square footage. There's no incentive for you to sell these small plans for market rate. And, you know, so I would, I would say a couple things. I would make available the larger plan, you know, some of the larger plans for affordable. And I would maybe limit building the smaller plans to a proportion of them sold at market rate. So if you don't sell any small plans market rate, you can't build the small plans for affordable. Because our obligation is to make it so that these affordables blend in and are not stigmatized, and it's, the casual observer wouldn't necessarily know. That's not the case with the way it is now. I really appreciate the detail that you've gone into on the different sites, and this and that and the other thing. But that's my concern. Now, then when you look at the neighborhoods you've created, some of them have a much higher proportion of affordables than others. So once again, you know, the 25, 75%, I would say that, you know, with these neighborhoods you've designated, 25% affordable is the max. And you have to, and there's one neighborhood that's toward the end of the, I don't know what the names are, where you have, half of them are affordable. So, you know, I, I don't think anyone on the board wants to get into, you know, micromanaging this. But there should be some general principles, and I don't think that they're meant at this point. Now, the next thing I'd like to bring up is, once again, we talked about Kimlock. We just had a modification of Kimlock where the builder came in and wanted to create additional space in an attic, or in a third floor. And there was a strong feeling among some people on the board that once you've come before us, that's it. And the way you've set this up, and so they were not allowed that. They were allowed to finish the space, but not to divide it up into bedrooms. The way you've set this up, you have options, you have this and that, and I think you're, you're absolutely correct that, you know, won't apply to the affordables. But we have, at least in this other case, you know, we have jurisdiction over the entire, you know, all the houses. And certainly don't want to be coming back every time you have a buyer who wants this and wants that. And so I think on, we almost need some kind of inventory of the lots to show what is going to be allowed, so that we have an idea about, you know, the ultimate, you know, especially if you have, you sell markets, and they have sunrooms, and they have two-car garages, and this and that, and then you have the affordables that have none of this, and not even a garage. That's an issue. So I don't know how we get around it. Normally, we're presented with, this is what we're gonna build. And I, I understand you're, you're wanting to build to the market. I think it's great, but it's a difficult concept in a 40B. I don't, Ed, is that, you know of other examples where they have customized homes and the market rates are?
And that's why I recommended doing the building envelope.
Okay.
Because it's not unusual for market rate units. Try to make flexibility.
Okay.
Because you just don't know. But I understand your concerns, but that envelope was really designed to address that.
But wouldn't it, wouldn't it be the case that if the affordables are not enhancing, you know, the plan, their plans, then they're gonna be clearly?
No, I think, well, you know my position.
Yes, I do.
Why don't you, why don't you?
Okay. Despite this letter from Robert Smith, and I'm sure David will present, I've worked on a number of 40B projects, and I checked the DHCD guideline. And again, it just confirms my understanding, and I'll make copies available through the chair. If you just take a look at the pages, the first page is in terms of exterior appearance. And I think we all understand that from the curb, you shouldn't be able to distinguish a market rate unit from an affordable unit. And here, I think some of the buildings, particularly the one that's 20 foot wide, the Nora is clearly from the curb distinguishable. But I would agree with Jeff, if in fact three market rate buyers elect to buy a model, then you can do the fourth one. Now, the second page is distribution of affordable units.
No, I want you to finish, Dave.
And it says affordable units must be proportionally distributed throughout a project in terms of both location and unit size type. And when I looked at the distribution, and I, I believe there might be some changes coming on that, it's clear to me that that was not a even distribution, as Jeff had also pointed out.
Did you get this, Mr.?
So again, I think, I think, I actually like the changes in the project. I think a simple solution is to reach agreement on the locations for the affordable units, tell us what that unit is gonna be, tell us whether it has a basement, whether it has a garage, and try to sort of work, negotiate what that should be. That's my primary concern. And I think from a practical marketing point of view, you have to have that flexibility, because you just don't know which model is gonna sell.
Ed, how do you reconcile the following? It says low and moderate income housing units shall be indistinguishable from the others. And that, I understand if you have townhouses and attached townhouses. But here we have freestanding single-family homes, and it goes on to say the units have a minimum square footage in order to make affordability. So assuming that a developer comes along like this one and says, I'm giving my two-bedroom affordable much more area than is the minimum that the state requires, but the two-bedroom market home next door, they want a living, you know, a family room or a bonus room, and they want a garage. How do you reconcile?
Well, the minimum simply states, here's what the minimum is. If you had a development that was 100% affordable, DHCD would expect that a three-bedroom be 1,200 square feet and have at least one and a half baths. But then, what it says is, if you're doing a 40B, the unit should be distributed proportionately. So it doesn't say there's a minimum unit size for that 40B affordable unit. Okay? It has to be at least that, but they take a look at the entire project, and what they want to say is, look, if the units are, market rate units are 2,000, then 25% of those 2,000 units should be an affordable unit. This does not say that you can do a project and have a 2,500-square-foot market rate unit and have the affordable unit be only 1,200 square feet. That's not what it says.
Which is what this project is going towards. There are many, I mean, the two assigned plans for affordable are about 1,200 to 1,300 square foot feet. And the rest of the plans are 1,800 to 2,500 square feet. And, you know, if you're wanting to make money in the market rate part, you're going to want to sell greater square footage, you know, to amortize all the site development costs. And frankly, the buyers want that too. I mean, that's...
No doubt about it.
So, so my feeling is, we're not there yet with this, you know, with what you, what your plan is for the affordables.
Can I ask Mr. Marshant a question regarding this? One moment, I'm listening to board concerns, and then I'll open it wide up. You can say anything you want. Go ahead.
Would one way to solve this, a possible solution be to do something like, pick an average of these plans and say that, I mean, basically pick plans with, with the applicant, pick plans that we believe are an average of what would be built there? And say, okay, so this will be an affordable unit, your designated location, we're gonna designate style. And then we'll have a garage.
That's what I would recommend.
Okay.
To know what that unit is. And you do not have to give affordable buyers a choice. There's enough uncertainty in this business to say, here's what we're offering, nobody's forcing you to buy it, this we think is a reasonable unit.
At that location.
At that location. And then you know exactly what you're getting for the affordable units. It's the way you did your, the other 40B that I worked with you on.
Without taking any sides here, I just want to comment that on the two over 55 projects that the town did as affordable without 40B, in those instances, they were duplexes alternating with singles. And in each case, the planning board allowed that the duplexes could be the affordable, the three duplexes. They didn't require that one of the freestanding detached be an affordable. So just as a comment, and... No, we're saying affordable projects. 25% of them, we carry...
Right, but it wasn't affordable.
It wasn't under, it wasn't under DHCD, but it was, we got the SHI com board, and the planning board, in its wisdom, acknowledged that it was maybe economically unfeasible for the developer to allocate a detached symbol to the affordability. And, and also that's whether or not it was similar to the others, the duplex wasn't. I have no problem with anything you're saying, I just wanted to make...
And I, I've worked on projects where they have not been exactly the same, but I thought in those projects, the affordable unit was still a perfectly reasonable size, and it wasn't this great sort of differential. The, the one unit design that really triggered my strong reaction was the Nora Abbey, or whatever it's called. It is 20 feet wide, it does have a garage under, it showed an elevation with no windows on one side. And I just thought that was nickel and diming, sorry, nickel and diming the affordable units. And there's no reason you have to do this. It's a, it's a large number, 56 units, complemented by a, when you have very small projects, and when it somewhat addresses yours, it becomes very difficult to make the numbers work when you have that affordability requirement. If you sort of do the analysis on a 16-unit project, because you don't have the opportunity to generate the funds on very many market rate units. So that's all. I, I think that is the way the board should approach it. Review the plans, make sure you're satisfied with that, nail it down, close the lots, know what they're gonna get, and I think that's the best way to proceed.
And my feeling is that if you were building a lot of these Nora Abys, fine. But really, it's not gonna happen. And for instance, you have a whole series of lots that have their assigned Nora Abbey as an option, but the Laughing Tiger is the, is the other choice, which is almost 1,900 square. So, you know, you're gonna sell those to market people. You're not gonna sell 1,300 square foot houses.
Jeff, I think you have, they've submitted a different...
This is, no, this is...
They've submitted a different unit options list, and I don't see the Nora Abbey on, oh, Nora Abbey's still there, okay.
It's like the sixth one over. But anyway, so that's my concern. And, you know, you can take me through it, and maybe I, you know, maybe there's some thought behind it, but...
Let me pause and hear from Mr. Belver, because he's jumping out of his seat there.
I'm Mark Belver, and I'm a consultant for the housing part of the property for 15 Great Road. Just wanted to address some of the concerns that I heard this evening, specifically yours, Jeff. We've been working over the last week, both with Mass Housing Finance, and also we had taken some input from Ed, and we've taken some input from Roland, and some input from, from the two committees. I think the information that you're relying on is from last Thursday.
Okay.
And to speak to some of what Cheryl had said earlier, what we've really tried to do is listen to the feedback, both from the board and also from the topography on the property. Originally, in the, the original layout that we proposed last Thursday, there was some clustering of, of the affordable units. And we had only offered three different ones. The Nora Abbey was one of the three, the Fox Glove and the Heska. Remembering that our market is two and three bedrooms, we do not have four and a half units here on the property. And we had discussed with the board last week finishing basements, and we also talked about finishing third floors. There is really only one or two of our units that we proposed that we could actually finish, the third floor. What we also looked at is our market, and we've had a marketing analysis done by a, by a local brokerage firm. And, you know, the, the three strategies are your first-time buyers, your second strategy... And, you know, the three strategies are your first-time buyers, your second strategy is a small move-up buyer. Obviously, without four bedrooms, we're not going to appeal to families per se. And then we have the aging population. So what we've tried to do is go back this week and take a look. The architect that's doing this project that we've chosen, we're choosing plans out of a treasure chest that she has, of about 500 or 600. The general theme that we tried to use throughout the entire project from the get-go was that you'll never know everybody that lives in the property because the property is large. So what we tried to do is we tried to break it down into small neighborhoods or villages. We tried to take one theme and use the theme throughout all of the construction. So the theme that we chose is 19th century shingle-style homes. Every single one of these homes is part of a collection, and the larger collection is part of the architect's treasure chest. So we haven't custom-designed any of the units for this property other than for its topography. One of the shortfalls, which David has spoken about in the prior approved project, is that a lot of the units didn't work with the topography. And since there's a great change in both Phase Two, as you go from where the apartments are going to be approved up through the higher elevations, and in the front, we've got a lot of ledge. What we've tried to do is to stay away from having to blast. Thus, the reason why we have different, both for the market rates and for the affordables, we have different types, either slab, we have crawl space, we have a full foundation. So on the newest matrix that you received this evening, what we've done is we've gone through, and we now have 14 lots. Of the 14, five, five, I'm sorry, are, can be chosen as low and moderate. Okay? And of those five, we've introduced two additional models that have the ability to have a first-floor master bedroom for the aging population. Now, the Nora Abbey Ed had spoken about and spoken about this evening on several times, that came out as a stock point. So a lot of her treasure chest of some 600, 700, 800 different ones, these are units that are being chosen all over New England as market rate units. These are not units that are chosen or designed specifically for low and moderate income buyers. These are units that any one of you, or anybody in the public can, you know, can go on the website, can call up, can order the plans, and build them in any municipality throughout the New England area. So there's nothing that has been identified and has been marketed for low and moderate. All of the units that we've chosen can be used as market rate units. The only limiting factor on the entire property is the ledge and the topography. Because of the villages, what we have done after we spoke with the building inspector is we've gone through an analysis of every single lot. It's been a building envelope in the lot. The purpose of the building envelope was to identify what units could fit on every single lot. So when we come back with building permits over the next two years and apply for them, the building inspector will know, Roland will know upfront, what units can fit on each lot. We can meet the 15-foot setback for what was required by the fire department. So if a buyer comes in as an example, and we had one at one point in time, a couple of weeks ago, we had a 2,600-square-foot unit, which was called the Bosom. Ed had commented during one of our conversations that that was, you know, kind of bringing me to the project that we were doing. So we've removed that from the product mix. But if we had, obviously, that unit wouldn't fit on every lot throughout the entire community. Roland said, "I don't want to be making, you know, unnecessary decisions or trying to determine what the board would ask." And we've gone through the process of identifying every lot, what will fit on every lot, and that's what you have on that matrix, which shows you the exits. A buyer can come in, and a buyer can say, "I want any number of those specific, either for market rate." And the way we looked at it is from the affordable as well. We don't know what the affordable pool is going to offer to the project. Because we don't know what that affordable pool is, we could have somebody like myself that is looking to downsize, or they're older and don't necessarily have children and might want to have a master on the first floor. So we have a range of units that they can choose from, both two bedrooms and three-bedroom units. They are all designed for market rate units, so the market rate person can come in off the street and say, "I want a Pesto. I want to have any number of those other units, including the Nora Abbey." And to address some of Ed's concerns about the Nora Abbey, we had the architect work on some of the elements that he had discussed earlier in his conversation today. We added windows, we've churched it up, we've tried to address some of the things. Now, a market rate person could come in and want a Nora Abbey, and at which point, they can decide which of the lots they want to choose on. But that's one of the five that we've identified. If you look at the Rosebud, which we added today, it's almost an 1,800-square-foot affordable unit. Now, remembering that our affordable customers that are going to be coming into this project also have to deal with affordability. As the unit gets larger, the condominium fees, as the unit gets larger, the cost of owning the unit goes up. Even though we've already committed to building five-star Energy Plus homes, highest rating possibly get for Energy Star, and we are building the units identically, both affordable and market rate, inside and outside, to our specifications, they still have to be able to afford the size that's constructed for them. And I think, to argue against his point, there may be quite a few customers that come in that may want 1,200 and 1,300. And there may be some that come in and choose 1,800 square. That's up to them. There are five units in the pool. They range from the 1,200 to the 1,800 square feet. Our market rates range from 1,200 to 2,300 square feet. We are dead center for what our affordability offerings are. That's why MFHA wrote that email this afternoon and said that it met their criteria for the design of our buildings, for our specifications, and for the location. And we've worked on those locations today.
Take time, no, take time for a minute.
Yep.
The board hasn't all seen the MFA letter, which came in about 6 o'clock tonight.
Yep.
We don't all sit on our computers. We have dinners for our families. So the letter says, and I'll read it into the record. Letter was received from David Hale to myself, copied to Michelle Pobley, and then Town Council and Attorney Lou Levine. This is the email from Robert Smith of Mass Housing regarding Mass Housing's review of the affordable units and affordable location plan. Then if you read down, the email from Robert Smith says, "David, thank you for this email. We've reviewed the proposed affordable unit types and locations, and they look appropriate to us. Good luck at the hearing, and please let me know if you have any questions or concerns." I just want to read David's letter to Robert Smith that was responded to. David wrote, "It was a pleasure to speak with you and Katie this afternoon. We appreciate the time you spent to review our plans in terms of the affordable unit types, how they fit into the overall development theme and their specific locations. After speaking with other team members, and based on your comments, we made the following adjustments. On the front phase, we have made Unit 9 a market unit and Unit 1 an affordable unit. On the rear phase, we've made Unit 43 a market unit and Unit 37 an affordable unit. Attached to this email, you will find an adjusted chart for front and rear phases, as well as a PDF that contains both the affordable locations as well as elevation of all the unit types. Please confirm these plans and changes meet your requirements. Again, thank you for your time and attention." But I'd like you, if you could, to put up the plan with the units and the changes. Can you get it on the screen? Because we have people watching at home too, and I want to be sure that everybody's seeing what we're talking about.
Great. Just one other point in terms of the changes. One of the comments, the last time that we were here, and Tuesday, I believe, also, was the concern that the affordable, the affordable units could be discerned from the market rate units because they didn't have garages. Every unit on the property, affordable or market rate, now has a garage.
Thank you very much.
Those are done. So I don't believe, you know, speaking back to Jeff, your point, I believe we've tried to address, you know, the concerns that we've heard and feedback in terms of the affordables, the locations, the unit type. Your affordable buyer can come in, and they can pick any one of the five. So if they're turned off by the Nora Abbey, they don't have to choose the Nora Abbey. They can choose any one of the others based upon what their needs are and based upon what their requirements are.
I'm sorry, I just want to go back to Ed's point is, because the concept of buying an affordable is a little new to us. Normally, they're built and then people, you know, is this, are you familiar with this process where people would actually buy a building, a house to be built out of a portfolio for affordables?
I've never seen it on a For Sale Affordable network. Because it's, you know, it's more difficult.
Because what I, yeah, it's, yeah.
You sort of want to, you know, you want to build it.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering, that being said, if, you know, you guys can break new ground, but you could also pick out specific models for affordable, you know, for affordable homes on specific sites.
What happens if it doesn't meet the buyer? We talked about possibly there's not a large enough pool locally to be able to absorb the number of units that we're going to construct. This gives you some more flexibility.
Yeah. Could I comment on that?
Yes.
If the spread between, again, buyers are looking for value, whether they're affordable buyers or market rate buyers, in communities that are not as desirable as Littleton, and where the spread between the market price and the affordable price is not that great, affordable buyers say, "Well, we'd love to live here, but we have no equity. We can't make any real money in this deal, so we'll go to perhaps a less attractive town and buy there and have equity." Where you're offering real value, and these are real value because you get to buy a very nice house in a good location that'll be well-built. I've reviewed Mark's site. I mean, he's done, he's built a lot of houses. They will sell. And remember, this is a slow process. You've got time to sort of attract those buyers. So I don't think this project's going to have a difficult time selling the 14 affordable units.
Do you remember the average size of Kimlock, does anyone?
They were over 2,000 square feet.
Over 2,000 square feet. They sold instantly.
Because it's a great deal.
Did the, was anyone aware the lottery was subscribed completely? I don't think the, didn't you know that there was not a full subscription to that lottery at all?
It was not, it was not a Littleton applicant, I believe.
Not a Littleton applicant, and I don't think they had, in the lottery, I think they only had one qualified applicant. I think they had to sell the affordables after the lottery at a later date because the lottery was undersubscribed, even in Kimlock, which was a surprise.
The lottery was undersubscribed, but they sold very quickly.
Yeah, but I'm saying.
There was no sitting on them, and they were over 2,000 square feet, and he got good money for them, and he got good money for all the others.
No, he got the same money for them that Mr. Hale will get for his because the state sets the affordable price.
Exactly. But on the other hand, even in a small complex of, how many units?
Eight.
Eight units. He was able to build 2,000 square foot with a septic treatment plant, for our septic design. He was able to build 2,000-square-foot affordable units and sell them at the state-set price and still.
We don't know his performer and whether he made money. We don't know that.
I'm not saying he can't make money.
But that's what, that's what the argument of this applicant is, that he can't make money. And that, and that has to be recognized because we don't know that Kimlock made money. I would venture to guess that they're.
But Sherri, we don't, I mean, I have to disagree a little bit. And, you know, there, this is a different concept because they're building to market. And this is why, you know, I think we're struggling with this. I'm struggling with the affordable thing. I'm also struggling that you have so many models. I mean, it's a lot of models. I, you know, I'm an architect. I love this. I mean, I think, you know, I'm loving that you're getting these interesting plans and you're not building, you know, just slab-sided colonials. I think it's great. But I, you know, and this revised thing is, but it's very clear, and the red shows, I guess, what you've changed. I just am wondering if we should just determine what we want to see in the affordables and assign them to specific sites.
Ed, speak to it.
That's all.
Just a couple of points. First of all, when the point was made about affordability and condominium fees, you have to remember that all these people are going to have access to the clubhouse, pool, weight room, exercise room, all that kind of stuff. That, you know, provides additional value, but it makes the overall condominium fees maybe a hair higher than they would otherwise be. And if you look at condominium fees as maybe, in this project, it'll be $1.75 a foot for these units. So the bigger the unit, the more the condominium fees, costs more to build, you know, that also backs off maybe what you can sell it for because you've got to, you've got to work on that formula. So, you know, it affects the affordability of the house, and I think since we're providing choices of different sizes, unless you all want to form a committee and start picking colors and stuff, let the buyer pick the units. We did our little project in Concord. We had six affordable units in a lottery. We were undersubscribed. We got them all sold, but, you know, I sweat bullets, even though it wasn't my money. You know, it was a loan that had to get paid back, et cetera. You know, there's no reason that this committee should choose when we're willing to give the consumer a choice. No reason whatsoever. There's nothing in the regulations, you'd be making it up. And there's nothing in the regulations about the size of the units either. You know, we had Kate Lacy and Robert Smith, who worked at the, he's an attorney, worked at the Housing Appeals Committee for several years, on the phone, they went through all this stuff extensively. Their comment was, "This is a beautiful development. You've done a great job. These things mix in well. They asked us to make a few changes. We made them, and they were very clear. You qualify, you meet the regulations."
Well, I like it that there are more models offered than the two small models. That's great. I'm still a little, I just don't understand the process. If, if you, I'm just trying to understand motivations here. If you are, you know, qualified for one of these moderate-income houses, wouldn't you, wouldn't you, wouldn't you want as big a, I mean, because you have a cap on the amount of money that you can charge for them?
Can I, can I interrupt just for a second? You know, Sherri had said, when we met on Tuesday, "What's on the street?" You had said that on a couple of occasions. "What are people here?" You know, I've had probably three widows come up to me over the past week or 10 days, said they watched the meeting, and that they are looking forward to being able to move from their home as widowers into a two-bedroom, small, affordable unit.
I could see that.
You have a varied market of affordability. It's just not a couple with a child, and Sherri can speak to that. And I, and I think by opening up the options, and, I mean, I guess I'm going to talk out loud, I mean, it doesn't really matter. I mean, if they just want to pigeonhole it, I think you hurt your market.
It matters to us because, you know, at the outside, we have to sell one affordable, even in a bad market, for every five. Okay? So we want as many options as possible to meet that demand. And demographics are changing. You know, the parts of the market that are growing are the older population. You know, it's the baby boom and people that are older than that that are driving demographics today. The people in the middle who are in the prime, what we used to think of as the prime move-up home-buying market, there's a little dip there.
Well, I agree with you about this market. In fact, you know, there were some comments about your little, you know, your little neighborhood with, you know, the garages on the side. And I have, my wife Sanford, my planner, is visiting, who lives in exactly that. She's a 72-year-old widow. She's happy as a clam.
Yep.
And I'm only concerned that the, it's our responsibility to not, to not have a development where the affordables are identifiable. That's my only concern. But I don't think, how do we do that?
Let's take a step back. I want to take a step back. I want to take a step back. You've said the same things, and we're going round and round, and we're repeating the same things over and over again. I have other people here who have come out tonight to attend the meeting, and I just want to hear, is there anybody?
Board members.
I have other board members, but I've given them a lot of opportunity, and they haven't jumped up and down. I have people sitting here, and I'd like to ask if there's anyone here listening who would like to comment on the things that, I can see your hands.
Oh, yeah, I was waiting. I just want to piggyback on what Jeff said. Because I have the same concern, but it's a little more specific because in reading the letter from Robert Smith on this thread of correspondence here, it seemed like somewhere in this path, there was a move to move some things around a little bit and to kind of sprinkle around a little bit. And so I get that, and I think that was a good move that was suggested. I'd just like to also suggest that it be opened up even just a little bit more in switching 44 in this plan to 29. And it's just, it's just a little bit of a move, but again, it sprinkles it a little bit, it takes a little bit of density away from one specific area. It takes a little bit of density away from one specific area and puts one of those houses up in there. And 29 seemed to be a smaller footprint as well, so I thought that that would be something that, that I'd just like to throw out. That's a very specific thing, but I want to concur with what Jeff said as well. And, you know, I like the idea that you're saying that they're all going to have garages. I think that's a, that's a big plus to my estimation. That's it. I just want to get that.
Let me ask anyone who's attending tonight, if you have any time. Yes, Jerry?
Oh, I had to find something.
Jerry, help me read this statement. My recollection when the original comprehensive permit went through was that the board put in quote-unquote swarm language to protect the rentals because when you start getting into ownership, those are units that drop off of the affordable inventory, and again, puts Littleton at risk. And what ever happened to all that?
That's what they're back here for, Jerry. They have, they have made an argument that it's economically unfeasible to do all rentals, and they are requesting a modification with the assurance and guarantee that they will retain enough rentals to keep our SHI, which is our inventory, through the year promised in the host community agreement. And so that's what we're here trying to decide. As a overall response to this modification, we have had only one other comment of record that is against this proposal. The, for the most part, people are generally in favor of what they're trading off. They're trading off fewer three-beds. They're trading off less density in the for-sale component, which is up against the Gris Mill neighborhood. There is some suggestion that the Gris Mill neighbors were liking this project better because the single families against their neighborhood was better for them. So that's exactly what we're trying to deliberate here. Anyone else? There were some letters I want to read into the record that came in from different boards. Anyone want to help me read them? From Traffic. This is from-
Will you read this one?
Yeah, just from the, just from Eric Massimanta from Traffic. You don't have to read the whole email, right?
So down- Hi, oh, from Eric, he's written, "Hi, Tanner. Have you received the memo regarding the change in development plan for the property at 15 Great Road in Littleton? We're comfortable with proposed change that result in a smaller number of, small amount of new trips, less than 100, at our Great Weekend." And that was in response to an email sent to Eric. The applicant for 15 Great Road in Littleton is changing the development plan slightly. The changes are identified in the attached short letter based through the trip generation change minimal. They're going back before the ZVA next week. If you could acknowledge receipt and any thoughts from Mass DOT, that'd be great.
So that was from Mass DOT, to put it in context, and it was accompanied by a letter from Bayside Engineering, which was the consultant for Traffic on this project. Bayside Engineering essentially says, "We understand you propose changes to your development. The traffic impact is described below. The original October 2011 traffic impacted access study was prepared to determine the traffic impacts of 200 apartment units to be constructed at Great Road. Trip generation was based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual for apartments. The subsequent July 9, 2012 updated DIAS was based on 48 apartment units and 142 townhouse units. Trip generation was determined based on ITA LUC 220 apartments and condominium townhouse, which is a different line item. The highway access permit, which was filed with MassDOT, was based on this development scenario. Currently, the development proposal has been modified slightly and will now consist of 144 apartments and 56 condominiums. Table 1 summarizes the anticipated change. And just to summarize it, average weekly daily traffic before was 1286 versus now 1384. Weekday peak hours entering was 17 compared to 20 now, exiting 78 compared to 86 now, and weekday evening peak hour, 83 before, 88 now, 41, exiting 41, 46. So overall, the homeowner, homeownership concept does generate more traffic trips. The totals were 124 traffic trips before and 134 traffic trips now. And the conclusion on the Bayside letter was, "The change in composition and number of units is expected to generate 98 additional daily trips, 49 vehicles entering and 49 exiting. During the weekday morning peak hour, 11 additional trips, three vehicles entering and eight vehicles exiting are expected. And during the weekday evening peak hour, 10 additional vehicle trips, five entering and five exiting are expected. Based on these minor increases, the findings of the TIAS and the UTIS would not change. As the daily traffic generation will be less than a 10% increase, there is no substantial change relative to NEPA, and from a transportation perspective, no additional review will be required. As always, if you have any questions or we could be of further assistance, please call." And that was Traffic. Got one from the Fire Safety Officer. Essentially, he said, he was asked, "The Chair of the ZVA has asked me to ask either U.S. Safety Officer representing the Fire Department or the Chief to provide some written comment, hopefully with no objection, to the board prior to the hearing tomorrow night." And then he responds by saying, "I have reviewed the plan's date at 12/4/13 and have no concerns." That's Fire Department. Help from James Greppi. "I've reviewed the proposed changes to the above-mentioned project and have the following comments. As mentioned in the initial reviews of this project, I am concerned with how wastewater treatment will be provided for the development. The technology and engineering is not a concern of mine, but the organizational, financial, and legal framework for the service to be provided for the development, to the development. If the treatment plant were to fail to operate properly, it could put the units in the development in noncompliance with the housing codes. I believe Town Council should review the agreements to ensure proper safeguards are in place to prevent such a situation, and the Board of Health has the proper contacts to facilitate the correction of treatment system. We see a large number of individuals who want to finish basements and attic spaces for additional living space in their dwellings. Is there extra capacity in the treatment plant to allow for the addition of potentially more bedrooms, or will each single-family home be legally restricted to the number of rooms or bedrooms like a master bedroom in condominium development? Number three, please provide additional information on the potential clubhouse uses. Will it have food service facility? And number four, the pool shown on the plan will need to be approved and permitted by the Board of Health. Plans for the pool will need to be approved before construction." Just responding to some of those. The number one question about the legal framework and the safeguards on the treatment plant, we understood from the last presentation, is sort of dictated by DEP, and those are in place, and Council has assured us that they'll be looking at the documents and the legal documents to make sure that's all set. So that should satisfy number one. Number two, we're, we're struggling with whether or not the finished spaces in the attic or the basement are going to be allowed as a right, or do they have to come back to get them approved? And that's one of the things the Board will be discussing in the waiver list. However, I think that the applicant has represented that the treatment plant does afford enough treatment to have additional bedrooms or space that would be considered bedroom under the DEP definition. However, the deeds will be restricting the number of beds in the condominium documents.
There's really no excess capacity in terms of bedrooms. Every unit will be deed restricted in every gallon count.
So there's no excess capacity?
No.
Thank you for correcting.
Yeah, so, and every unit will have a deed restriction.
Okay. Yes.
And just going back to the first one, in terms, DEP is a state agency. It grants the groundwater discharge permit, reviews the treatment plan. The local Board of Health has no formal say in that. The fundamental difference here, and I'm not sure if it's been introduced to DEP yet, they like it when there was, they liked it when there was one owner, all rental on that one development. They get a little bit more concerned, I think, when you have sort of a rental component and a for-sale component. You just want to ask the applicant if that's going to be addressed.
It's already addressed. There were already for-sale units attached to the wastewater treatment plant, as you know, and DEPs were making these changes, and the documents, it's like do or care, a little bit of tweaking, but, but they work, they work very well, and DEPs have to-
Well, they'll, you'll have to get us something from DEP.
Your, your permit that we granted was 100% one?
No.
19, 48.
Right. But now there are, there are a lot more. There are a lot more. So you should just ask for a copy of the groundwater discharge permit.
I think actually, it's already, you know, all that stuff gets delivered to Jim Greppi. So I think he must have just a big pile of paper that he hasn't looked at.
Okay. These were his concerns, and this has been coming down the pipe pretty fast, so I understand that if he hasn't made that decision.
You know, in comment through his number four by the board, the permit by the Board of Health, also a permit for the Building 5, and permit should need to be, you know, I mean, it's actually standard state regulation they have to get permits for all the buildings. I mean, I'm surprised even with that comment.
Ed, did you want to say something else about the DEP, the letter from Jim Greppi?
No.
Okay. The water comments, I'm not going to read the whole letter because the water comments are basically how the, how the meters are going to be serviced. It's really, it's really got nothing to do with the project, but essentially what Mr. Danos from the Water Department has said is that it's all right with him if the four rent units have one user, one bill, and the rental agency has one meter, and that the individual homes will have their, each have their own meter, and they will have their own hook-up fees, similar to every other residence in Littleton, and their own bills, the similar to every other resident in Littleton, so.
That does bring up the question, we allow one of the rental units to be converted at will to ownership. There's a difference in fee structure, there's a difference in meter structure, there's a difference in connection fees, and it becomes an issue.
I think he recognized that in the letter. He said if the applicant subsequently becomes other than a single user, then he has to go back to the Littleton Water Department. It's his suggestion that he be allowed to go back to the Water Department without further ZVA approval. Essentially, that has to do only with the billing and the user fees.
I think he figured that part.
Yeah, and then the last paragraph says, "The Water Department will work with the applicant owner, his or her agent, and the Littleton Fire Department to ensure that fire flow parameters meet fire code requirements for the construction and density of both the rental and ownership components through system modeling to review changing pipe diameters, connection locations, and other physical means to maximize when and if necessary fire flow. Modeling efforts by Littleton Water Department will be at no charge to the owner." And then Planning Board writes, anyone else want to read? "Thanks for the opportunity to review the proposed amendments to the 16 Great Road 40B project. SHI impasse." That's the, SHI is the number of rental units, excuse me, the number of affordable units and how we keep over the 10%. "The Planning Board members would like to address their dismay with the proposed change to project that will result in a significant reduction of the project's long-term impact on the town's subsidized housing inventory. The proposal is not yet clear on the exact number of units that would remain as qualified to be included on the SHI, as the developer is also asking for the option of having units in one of the apartment-style buildings to be for-sale units, as well as changing areas shown as Phase 1 and Phase 2, permit rental to for-sale family, semi-family units. As the local economy continues to rebound, residential development of market-rate units will continue throughout town, and any reduction in the number of units on the SHI will impact the town's future. As you know, Littleton has partnered with developers of smaller 40B projects that are located throughout the town, Kimlock Farms, Manion Place, and the Littleton Ridge 40B projects, as well as the Shellburn Village, White Street, and Root Lane over 55 developments that include affordable housing components. The impact of the reduction from 190 affordable units to 144 or 122 units is more significant than the addition of all the projects listed above combined, and should not be undertaken without significant benefit to the town. Size of project. The size of the project, tabulated as the total number of bedrooms proposed, continues to be a concern. The final decision should include detailed information on the total bedroom count, both for initial construction and for possible future additions, renovations by private homeowners. The method to address finished and unfinished basements, rooms noted as a study rather than a bedroom on the floor plans, and future additions and renovations must be spelled out to properly address future impacts to the wastewater treatment plan. Outbuildings. The final decision should include details on future outbuildings. Will sheds or detached garages be allowed for all or some of the single-family homes? If so, locations where these structures would be allowed should be designated on the plans. Access. Detailed plans for access from Room 2A should be provided to the town to ensure all local issues have been addressed, including access to nearby bike trails, pedestrian safety and access, and vehicle access and egress. I presume that the town, through the Board of Selectmen, will be interested in working closely with MassDOT regarding detailed design of this new intersection and impacts on vehicular and pedestrian safety." From the Conservation Commission, "The only comment I have for Conservation, since they have to follow this anyway, would be that it would be, it should be up to the Conservation Commission to decide to waive the wetland fees, which have go to the state, and they would have to ask MassDEP for a waiver as well." Oh, this is one I hadn't seen. This is from an abutter, Keith Carruth. "Please share this letter with the Zone Board of Appeals. Via Zone Board of Appeals, I'm ranked to ask that you deny Omni the request for yet another waiver to keep their development viable. Omni is holding the town hostage, knowing that our 40B housing is below the threshold. They keep raising their demands with the threat that they will leave and we will be out of compliance. Before proceeding with a fair decision, it is worth looking at that worst-case scenario in regards to 40B housing. A new developer with a new proposal, if they're, a new developer with a new proposal. If that were to happen, and it may not, we have learned a lot from this process with Omni, and I think we might be able to craft a better arrangement with someone else. The Omni development offers nothing to the town of Littleton. Even if Littleton grants the waiver, it appears that the town will be open to vulnerability for an indeterminate amount of town regardless. As I understand, there are no developers in the pipeline to build if Omni is denied. Further, if Omni cannot make their project viable without a long list of waivers due to changes in the housing market, won't the same be true for other developers? Perhaps the threat they purported to protect us from has decreased since Omni came to town. Please remember the voices of Littleton that loudly shouted down the easement request for Omni at the town meeting earlier this year. Busy, working homeowners that can't attend meetings trust that you will represent them in the interest of the town. I suspect that Omni recalls their easement request being shouted down. I ask that the ZVA look back to that night, and that answer is well. There is no question, it was definitely say no to Omni." Have you seen all those? I think they came in very late. We'll get them out to you.
You got somebody in the back?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. Jenna Brown, Senate Member of the Board of Selectmen. I attended the staff meeting where Omni came and gave a presentation requesting Board input, and I took some notes, and I have a question relative to the rental properties, the restriction provision relative to them being rented properties in perpetuity. And the note that I have here is that- And the note that I have here is that Buildings 1 and 2 would stay rental, but that Omni would like the option of renting or selling Building Number 3, and I'm wondering in the last 10 days if Omni has made any decisions relative to Building Number 3 wanting it to be sold, units, or remain rental. And if they remain rental, would they be willing, or would we be able to keep Building Number 3 also in perpetuity as rental to contribute to our affordable housing numbers?
Do you want to answer that?
Yes, so our, our request to the board is to, is to have the option of converting Building Number 3 to condominium homeownership in the future. And that, that request remains, and it remains in compliance with the host community agreement. And I think our investor group thinks it's an important feature, and so, that's the message.
Is your concern for the SHI?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello, Steve, which has a 86 Chris Mill, direct abutter. I wonder if you could bring up the Phase 2 allocation plan, personally, had a chance to see that.
When you want the affordable allocation?
The one that was on, no, the one that was on the screen?
She's going to break it up.
So I'm just curious, David and Mark, about the allocation methodology for the Phase 2.
The allocation of affordables?
Yeah, but the, so they're clustered, they're clustered behind us. And I think, so, and that may be okay, I was just trying to understand the allocation methodology behind how they're spread out there, when we look at the...
Where is the?
So, so it's the cluster of five?
He's...
Right to the right.
Right there.
Yeah. So I'm just questioning the allocation of them, you know, seems to be centralized in an area. And if that's the case, it's okay, it just goes back to Jeff's point about the aesthetics of not being able to distinguish them between affordable and market rate. But I'd like to know the methodology if, if there is one.
One moment, though. Somebody earlier asked for a switch. Was it you, Alan? You asked for a switch, was it one of those units?
Yeah, he asked for the one in the middle, upper, at the end of the, at the end of the spur, the first spur on the left-hand side.
You suggested the window here?
Correct, yeah, yeah. And it's already, one's already suggested moved by the state.
He wants to move that one.
He wants to...
Wants to make that one a affordable, start with number 44, which I think's down the bottom range.
Exactly.
That plans out proportions.
Yeah, but it still does, it still does put all the affordables with their back to your backyard, right?
No. It helps a little, I mean, and the landers drop off at, at the first tier there with the first two, so, I mean, it's okay, I just wanted to understand the methodology, but more importantly, again, that we just keep in mind that the, the recognition of those units is seamless. So I applaud Jeff's continued...
Yes, too. It seems like there should be one over here, and at least one over here.
While I have you, do you mind if I pick on you a little bit?
No problem, sure.
As somebody who's looking over this project, who has it in your line of sight, what do you feel about the tall buildings down below, the three buildings down below?
I don't have an issue with them, although I don't know the, the exact height on what they'll be. I think we had talked collectively that I don't think that, that the building will be as tall as our house. I think we'll be looking down on that building.
Would you feel like a balloon?
Or crane or something?
It would help, or...
Wouldn't hurt.
Also, I understood from the applicant that there wouldn't be mechanicals on that roof, so he wouldn't be looking at mechanicals, he'd be looking at a finished roof. Did you have any discussions of that with the applicant? And the other question I had for you was, as an abutter, what's your sense of this density against your Chris Mill versus the other plan?
This is more desirable.
This is more desirable. And, and more desirable to have for-sale units against Chris Mill? That's what I've been hearing from some of the Chris Mill neighbors, so I was...
Yeah, and I mean, the, the five direct abutters along with, with us met after David and Mark presented to us, and we all came to the same conclusion.
Thank you for that. Anyone else?
Could you just have them go over the sightline?
Yes.
Issues that's up here now?
I'm just trying to move that.
Works on that.
What's the perspective there?
So it's, it's just, it's a cross-section, and this is a, it's a graphic that we used early on. So what we've done, and actually, we have a handout. We've basically shown where the big building is, and shown where the townhomes were in relation to 90 Chris Mill, and you're...
Eighty-six.
You're eighty-six. So I think your house is actually a higher elevation than the 90.
Yeah.
And so what this shows is that the top of the new apartment buildings will be lower than the top of 90, so it'll be lower than the top of your, of your house.
So you're not using ours as the, as the top?
No, because I think Bergeron's is lower than 90, and yours is higher than 90, so we, you had to pick one, we picked the one in the middle.
That's the one we used last time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the same sightline that showed.
I think a balloon would be very helpful, and I think we need to have the building staked, because they're so much bigger than what we walked before. And I hate to do that in the snow.
If you saw two buildings, one 49 feet, one 53 feet, from many a distance, you would be able to tell the difference.
Twenty-nine feet, fifty-three?
Forty-nine, fifty-three. You would be able to tell the difference.
The original plan was not 49 feet, and...
The original was going from 49 to 53, plus...
And we really negotiated the 49 feet and, and stuck with it. We had justifications and the reasoning for it back then. I don't really understand why we need to go to 53 now. I'm still not convinced that it's necessary, and I'd like to see what it looks like.
Okay, I'm going to take another step back for a minute and try to, try to figure out how long would it hold in this meeting, and what we might be able to accomplish. What I heard tonight, as the major areas of concern were the highest buildings, the size, the mass of the height of the three buildings down below. Calling the board, do you agree that there should be a balloon? Do you agree that there's de minimis difference between 49 and 53? What's the board's pleasure on that?
First off, like Bill said, 49 to 53, put two buildings side by side, you hardly notice the difference. I see that that's not an issue. Secondly, if you went from three stories to four stories, you're decreasing the footprint by about a third of the building. So you're dealing with a lot less mass of buildings for just a little bit more height. So I think there's a met game there.
He hasn't just... Let the whole board, let the whole board be bold, and then you can answer.
He's just...
Cheryl, it's Rostrom.
So that's basically it. Well, I agree with you, Cheryl, on that I don't like these buildings, but in the context of the whole project, I accept them. And I feel they're in the appropriate spot. They're very understandable. It's a building type we don't have in town that I think will be appreciated once again by people who are less mobile or, you know, in transition. And I'm not concerned, you know, they're definitely tall, big buildings, there's no doubt about it, but in this spot, I'm not concerned, I'm not as concerned as I would be if they were along great road or in some other location on the site.
Alan, I'm not, I don't like the, the large builds myself, however, I can see the need for them in this site. The thing I would like to see is a drawing of what the building will look like against the background of the landscape, and it's part of the, you know, you've shown me the houses. I haven't seen a picture of these actual buildings. Is there an accurate picture?
Yeah.
As you're looking for that, the, the other, one other concern I have, I think you're trying to keep the heights down naturally, and what I'm concerned about, you might be keeping the roof pitch too low on the building, and the roof pitch won't be in keeping with the rest of the buildings in the neighborhood. Not that I want to make it higher, but I'd rather see the building be higher if the roof is aesthetically more pleasing, and I don't want to see the roof squashed down.
Or in a year...
See, I want to see something straight on. I'd like to see what that roof pitch looks like from the ground.
You know the pitch has...
Nine. Four or nine? Yeah. See, I can't tell that from...
Yeah, it's not drawn. We're making three ceilings.
That's fine, I just wanted to see.
Yeah, that, that matters for someone I can do.
Have they shown the whole?
Yeah.
It's kind of my touch.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, good. I don't have, that, that's fine, I was just concerned that the roof was too squashed down. Thank you.
Yeah.
I've seen a couple of Avalon projects, and one very much in particular that I actually had worked with these companies. Many big buildings, more even than seven of them in the house. I like the, the concept here that there are three buildings instead of four large apartment buildings. It's been said by several people, slower footprint, adding a more level, in between 49-foot high and 53-foot height. An inexperienced person's not going to be able to tell the difference. I like the mixture of the apartment buildings and the rest of the project, lots one and two being the single-family homes, rather than the original proposal. You know, I think there's been a lot of work that has been done to meet the concerns from our previous meetings, you know, when we did the, the other decision with the neighborhood and some of the boards, the boards in town, and the general comments from people who don't even live in the neighborhood. I think there's been a lot of work in there, a lot of progress has been made. And, you know, as long as there's a deed restriction in enforcement, strong enforcement about the number of bedrooms, because if you do attic conversion, basement conversions, other room conversions and everything else, as long as there is that strong component and therefore the, the restriction and oversight of the number of bedrooms, to me is one of the major factors, you know, I think that it's a very workable project. The one concern, main concern I have, and I've seen this in the 40Bs in other towns, is that it's designed thinking that there are going to be a lot of people buying these units or renting, you're going to have a lot of applicants for affordable units. I don't know, you know, I just hope there is that much of an inventory out there of people who want to look at this. I've seen a project of 24 townhouses where the second one, second grouping of them, they went out twice and got no applicants for the affordable units. I mean, it's going to, I know there's a mechanism for that, you know, this many units affordability and everything else, I just hope there are enough people that will take advantage of this and make it work.
And again, sticking with the height for right now, thank you, Bill. Sure. Just sticking with the height, you had some real concerns about the height, and I'm just calling the board.
I am concerned about the height, because I don't even think we had 43 feet approved for the different apartment buildings that were originally down here. If I remember correctly, 43 feet was approved for different buildings further off the hill. I am concerned, I think we need to see it, I think the neighbors need a chance to see what the height is. Maybe my concerns aren't valid, and I'd be delighted to be, I would sleep easier knowing that they weren't valid. I am a little dismayed, though, because I don't think that they have decreased the amount, the footprint in this area, or in fact, they've actually increased it by decreasing the density of Phase 1 and Phase 2, and making all of those single-family units, they've increased the green space tremendously up there, which is a wonderful thing. And I, and I, for the abutters' sake and for resale's sake, I am a real estate broker and in this town, and it does make a difference for their resale sake and their sake. And quite frankly, the market in Littleton turned very hard and very fast. I don't anticipate you having any problems selling your affordable units at all, as well as the other units, I'm sure they're going to sell very nicely. I hear you build a nice place. So, but I am very concerned with the height of these buildings, I think we need to see it, I think we need to let the abutters see it, and we have, they have increased the density, and they went from having, our old decision was 180 units, where now, they, they've decreased the density up here so much and increased the density so strongly down here, that I'm concerned about it. It just, they're such massive buildings now. Even their original permit was half, for the, the housing authority approved, as in keeping with the area, was half this size. So I think we need a sidewalk, maybe it's not a big deal, I think we need to see, see the heights and have a sidewalk and have the unit staked.
On just those three buildings?
On just those three buildings. Alan?
I have a number of concerns, but they're modest. I think this is a much better plan than you've seen before. I'm not concerned about the height. I am concerned about the location of the affordables. I think that, that will take a fair bit more work just to get it worked out so that it's comfortable for everybody as, as much as we can make it. And I have some concerns about the, the agreement as well, but, but they're modest, so I don't have a problem with the height.
Mark?
In keeping with the height that you asked, with the height concerns. I don't have any. I think most of the concerns I've had, I, or I've heard, seem to be aesthetic in nature, and to me, unless there's a concern about the health, safety, or environmental of those buildings, then I don't have a problem with them. And I haven't heard any concerns concerning those, so...
So, board's pleasure, do you think we need a balloon? No, no, no?
I said, how do you do a sidewalk with around a couple of 14s?
And staking on the buildings, board's pleasure? No, no, no. So...
I disagree.
Okay, here.
I will have trouble, I will have a lot of problem voting these units approving this plan without giving the abutters and us a chance to at least see the height of the building.
The abutters, I thought somebody mentioned that abutters have already looked at this, addressed this, and have spoken with the builders, so if they don't want it, I don't see why we should.
We just had an abutter a few minutes ago saying it would be nice.
Nice and necessary are two different things.
Yes.
Steve, 86 Chris Mill. I'm indifferent on it. I mean, we, we did not bring up the, the discussion about a crane or a balloon to measure the height. I think we had agreed internally that the top of our house would look down at some degree angle to the new height, proposed height. So I'm indifferent. If the board had agreed to put up a balloon or a crane, right, we could get neighbors together.
As a compromise to Cheryl, would it be possible maybe to get the ladder truck down there to raise it up 53 feet, to make sure we have a ladder truck that high, and park it there for an hour or so?
But we're, we're the property of this also.
I forgot to go for this without seeing it. I'm just not going to. I'm sorry, I don't think it's the best interest of the town.
We'll send them out for a drill to see if the ladder's working. I think it's possible.
Are we able to locate the ladder in that area? Is it developed enough to get the ladder in it?
Yeah, I think those buildings are close enough to the elevation of the drive, of the Maygau Drive, that you can sit there for a minute and just extend. So, I don't know if that's a possibility.
You have to talk to the chief.
I mean, we don't own Nega Park.
Cheryl is not one of them. I know that.
So, we have no vehicular access. And I think, you know, in fairness to the folks at Nega Park, I think you ought to call them and ask them.
Well, do you want to fly a balloon at that height?
I don't want to do either.
I know.
You know, we, you know, we've presented a cross-section. We have an agreement with the neighbors. The neighbors have spoken.
I know, but you have a board member who's very fixated on this height issue, and I think if you can put a balloon up there, you may get rid of one objection.
I don't know how to put a balloon. I mean, it's, you know, we spent a lot of money on computerized rendering that really provides a lot of information. We have, you know, the vast majority of the board not having an issue. I don't even know the first part of the logistics of getting...
Doesn't seem appropriate or fair.
What?
It doesn't seem appropriate or fair when we have the vast majority of everybody supporting our buildings outside. You know, we're trying to move forward. We want to, you know, get working on our construction drawings because of these delays.
I mentioned in the last meeting, I felt we should apologize to them for some, a lot of the things we've done that wasted their time. I would consider this another waste of their time and our time, and just delay the whole process. With all due respect, I don't see what good it's going to do. And to hold the whole process hostage to that, I think is incredibly unfair.
I'm not asking to hold the whole process hostage.
All these things take time.
They make every single plan, they have made, every single, every single meeting, they made major changes to our plans. We did not delay this process at once. Not once did we suggest any of the changes that they made throughout the last two years of doing this. Every single time. You've come in here today, this was supposed to be a discussion where we could talk about the plans they presented, and yet, things have changed again. Now there's new models, now there's new sites on the...
All due to what we talked about, that essentially, if not directly, indirectly suggested to them that they would be better off making those changes.
But they didn't give us a chance to...
So, no, we didn't tell them the changes.
We didn't give a chance to tell them what we wanted or why we wanted it. Things changed again, and then we're off to our homework again and looking at new plans. And when we come back again, we review plans. And it's like we never get a chance to really review or really look at what was presented. And that happened time, I felt like I was being subject from magic show, where, look here, and, oh wait a minute, no, look here. And it just, it changed over and over again. You did not delay that...
It changed because every time they presented, we'd have these discussions.
We did not propose a single one of their changes. For you to say that we delayed the process just isn't fair.
I'll let the speaker speak for himself.
Madam Chairman, I was on the shelter planning board for sixteen years, and during that time, we had cell towers, billboards that did balloon tests. And I also saw some balloon tests for cell towers and stuff. When you do a single balloon at such a long distance, going through mature trees, we had a hard time finding the balloon. And we were in a shorter, more open area than going through here. So, I just want to tell you, Cheryl, that even if we did a balloon test, you may or may not be able to see it. I was very disappointed as a board member thinking it would give me a good perspective. I couldn't find it.
Make a motion. Make a motion for a balloon test.
We did do a test when we started this, when the first, we did have a height, a balloon or a crane or something. When we first did this, when the first design was proposed, no, we didn't do that.
No, the balloon test was over at that...
Was that cell tower?
No, at the point, we did the balloon test at the point.
And the other thing, the other thing about a balloon test, if we're a cell tower, it makes some sense because they're similar in the same scale. But to try to see a balloon that's about a couple of feet in diameter and compare that to a huge building, I don't think you're going to get a good perspective or feeling for what the building's going to look like.
So, make a motion, we'll put it to a board vote.
We made the motion that requires something that shows the height of the buildings in a way that we can physically see them.
And direct the second to the motion. Okay. Go on then. There's been a lot of talk about the location of the affordable units and the size of the affordable units and being able to make them indistinguishable from the market units. And as I listened to it, it became, I at least got the sense that there's some very passionate people who are involved with this, architect maybe because he's not going to look at it and, you know, you can see some things about it. I'm wondering if it makes sense to form a small subcommittee to work with the developer on one meeting and sit down together and propose what you think would be a more even distribution of the affordable units and maybe the styles. I mean, maybe you want to be involved in that, Ed, because you're passionate about it too and you know the rules the best. But rather than this board, nine members with different senses of propriety, trying to dictate and micromanage where things go, maybe two or three sitting down together with the developer could determine what's feasible, what's possible, what's economically feasible, and what you might compromise on. Does that make sense?
So, proportion.
Yes.
Talking about proportioning, and there was a comment that was made earlier, and I haven't understood yet. Let me write some numbers, and you let me know if I'm correct or not correct, if I'm not correct, correct it. Phase One, there were twenty-four buildings, of which twenty-five percent makes it six affordable, six are shown, so we get twenty-five percent. Correct. Phase Two, there are thirty-three buildings, twenty-five percent give you eight, there are eight buildings shown. Correct. So, is there really any disproportion?
No, it's a spatial.
Bill, the buildings are all on these little lanes, and some lanes have half of them affordable and some have none affordable.
Yeah, but there was a comment made earlier that the numbers were not twenty-five percent in each. No, no.
That's not an option.
That's not it.
So, then, to understand the proportioning is the location of it?
Yes. Okay. And I think rather than all of us micromanaging that, if you met with one or two that have some definite ideas and are reasonable in terms of understanding building costs, it would be beneficial.
Well, you know, I don't really object to that, except that I spent, I spent an awful lot of time with the regulatory agency that is going to regulate this project. And they said that with the changes that we made and the unit types that we've shown, that we meet all of the regulations.
In fairness...
And, and we discussed the fact that the point of the regulations is not to come up with some sort of a Stalinist idea that all of the units are the same. Because what you find, what you find is that a lot of developers do these townhome projects where all the units are the same, you can't distinguish because they're all exactly the same, and they dumb it down. Every neighborhood in New England has a variety of homes. And, you know, in most of these towns around here, you know, there are no hundred-foot capes next to thirty-five hundred-foot homes. I think Griss Mill is kind of the, it's not the norm. The norm is more post-war houses where there's, you know, some have been expanded, torn down. It's a jumble up there. And I, I think that the regulators at Mass Housing looked at our rendering and said, you know, this looks like a typical New England town.
In fairness to what Cheryl said earlier, is that your plans keep changing, you keep bringing back changed ones. I don't know what the regulators looked at. It says the changes are fine, but I don't know which changes they saw, whether it was this last set or the one we got last Tuesday or the one we got a week ago. So, in fairness to that, I would ask you to meet with a subcommittee and to go over this, because I think the equitable distribution of affordables throughout the project is of concern, enough concern that we could spend three more meetings bandering it around unless a subcommittee met with you, and I understood the economics of it, and of some of your decisions, which I understand, you've pointed it out. Some lots will not hold the largest envelope. And so, the topography is going to dictate some of it. I think everyone needs to see that and be convinced of that.
Also, at this point, we don't have all the plans. The ones you've added to the, at least I don't. You have five potential affordables, of which I can only locate two. So, we haven't caught up with the documentation.
That's a fair, that's a fair comment. You know, we, we worked hard, Mark worked hard, Leslie worked hard, to respond to comments and to try and come with, with a plan that responded to those comments. Mass Housing has seen the latest plan. I would suggest that we start with the information that they have and go from there, which is, you know, all of the plans and the location of the affordable units as they asked us to make a couple of changes.
I don't know what you just said.
So, what I just said was, let's meet with the subcommittee. We'll start with the information that Mass Housing looked at.
That's fine. Thank you.
And then we're all in one place, and I'd be happy to forward that information.
Would you also please take your last meeting plan and make sure it matches with your stormwater drain plan? You show on one plan of your landscaping, you show extensive plantings of trees in the middle of another plan's storm drain. So, please make sure that they correspond.
Would you address that directly to Sue Carr? I would make a note of that because, but you know where, where in particular she's talking about?
I'm talking about behind building, the large building on the left.
Building one, yeah. And that we had, we had wanted to put some plants in there just to break up so that your detention basins aren't just big green holes, so that that was on purpose, but we'll look at moving it more to the side if that's what you understand.
Your abutter there says you promised them sweetening in trees, and it shows on the landscape plan, but on your stormwater plan, it shows that that is a large storm basin, and I don't think you can plant trees, and could be wrong.
You can't.
You can plant large trees in this...
And the conservation commission actually asked to save some plantings just to break it out.
I don't, I don't really understand how that works. Perhaps you could educate us.
We'll, we'll get into it in more detail when we get the design done.
Thank you.
So, we still have some time to look at the waivers.
You want a subcommittee?
Let's form a subcommittee.
No, I think Jeff and Alan, the two that are mentioned.
Are they willing?
Yes.
You both willing? Some of its ideas are a little... Take a motion.
I made the motion that a subcommittee be formed of Jeff, Neil, and Alan, Dallas, to meet with the applicant and their team to review the location and types of buildings for the affordable units in Phase One and Phase Two.
Second?
I'll second.
Others in favor?
You have to say, I can't hear you.
Right now, the next thing is that they got to figure out dates to when, so we can make a motion for a meeting.
You mean, what, four days notice key? Tuesday, Wednesday?
Well, if you wanted to have a meeting, let's see, if you post tomorrow, the earliest you could meet is Tuesday.
When are we meeting again?
We haven't decided that. You need another meeting.
We haven't gotten a waiver yet, or the decision.
We still have an hour, let's let it.
Let's presume, my presumption, that we'll probably, next meeting will be one, when I read the schedule, meeting date, and give them plenty of time for a meeting. If we go less than that, say, three weeks, don't forget, we got a couple seasonal holidays in there, that gives them more time.
I second Bill's proposal, Bill's motion that you meet again on the regular scheduled meeting.
No, not I.
All right, then let's pick. Can we do the night of January, which is on the week earlier? I mean, actually, it's Christmas.
Yeah, we're not going to make...
All we do is New Years. We're not going to do any of the New Years.
New Years is one night. It's the thirty-first and the first.
I'm out of town until...
Well, New Year's Day is the first.
I am out of town until six, and then I'm back on the seventh with kids starting school again.
Is everyone else out next week? Not next week, week after, between Christmas and New Years.
I'm out the second Thursday, the thirteenth.
Fourth is the Thursday.
What day are you back, Cheryl? You're back the sixth?
I'm back the, I'm back on the sixth.
Okay.
The seventh issue.
Yeah. So, seventh, eighth, or ninth in January?
Let's keep it the night. Thursdays. It's easy to remove.
Yeah, but...
Is Jeff here?
I'm not here tonight.
What, are you here the seventh or eighth?
Yes.
So, the seventh or eighth.
Wednesdays aren't the...
Seven? Should we stay the seventh for everybody? So, we're picking a time and place now, but we're not ending this meeting yet. It's still Wednesday, and waivers next. So, the seventh at?
Seven thirty.
At this address, we don't know what room that... That's all right for council, too? And Ed?
Yes.
Seven eight at seven twenty, we'll drop off the boys' caps first.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
So, now your subcommittee has to pick one to meet. You don't need to meet at night, you can meet in the daytime if that works for anybody. Actually, if I'm the lunch hour, it'd be a convenient time for Ed and council. You need to be, I'm not sure town council needs to be at that, I think they're just going to make some suggestions.
It's up to you, but I'm happy to be there or not as this...
It's going to be posted, you can come, but I don't think we need to bother you. So, do you want to pick a date to do that?
I'll do the twenty-seventh, Friday. I could do that. I mean, assuming these guys are going to be around.
I would prefer to do the first that following week, thirty.
So, what were you saying?
The thirtieth. Monday.
Here, are we days still running that uses phone? Thirty is fine, what time? Take it down.
One thirty?
Whenever.
I want one thirty?
It's fine, that's good for new travel.
That's what we meant, we didn't deal it to be as a business.
Yeah.
So, where were the...
Is that the time that you said? I think one thirty.
Paulian Keith in room three oh seven?
Yes, that would be fine.
Alan and Chuck, okay?
That's fine. We don't have a lot of takers that day for meetings, so.
Do we need a motion of voting that, or do they just...
I don't think you need to motion to schedule the subcommittee meeting. I don't think you need that. The subcommittee, they can schedule and post their own meeting, right? They need minutes, are you around, Kelly?
And if I could ask, when can we get the plans for those? You can go right to the site, but I couldn't find the block in Syria.
Well, we have the lion and tiger, we have given us, but it's, I don't have the...
Or maybe just send us the whole thing, or whatever you showed Mass Housing is, shall we accept? Or share it?
No problem.
We'll send it tomorrow, all that we use as a start, the Mass Housing.
All I need's the Christmas model. You know, Mariah Carey. She comes with it. Little doll sits on the mantle.
Little doll sits on the mantle. Is she affordable? Again, I'm going to have to find her first. For an architect, she could be someone to.
Before we get into the waivers, would it be appropriate to see what the board thinks about how we want to deal with potential conversion of buildings, right?
Oh, yeah, we discussed that. Do you want to call the board about that? No, we'll just pull, we'll just pull around and see what the board feels about the conversion of buildings. Rod, you want to start since it was your idea?
Yeah, I, I just would not, in the initial permit, allow them to convert at their, at their whim. I think they need to come back to this board so we can address the situation at the time that they want to do the conversion.
No, they're proposing to have a blanket, not a branch, option to convert, like coming back to the board.
Right, and that's what I'm not particularly comfortable with.
Okay. John? Oh, I'm sorry. Jeff?
I, I think I mentioned before, I just wondered if we could explore a timing. I mean, maybe, you know, one of the timeframes or something, just a little more control over what happens.
I, I agree. I think we should be able to, you know, look at it either at later date or put it up to 2020 after the census. So, I, I do think something needs to be done by.
Yeah, I agree. They come back to the board or some kind of a timeline, you know. Probably they come back to the board so that we can get the rationale as to why they need to do that.
Cheryl?
I think we're giving them enough concessions on all the other for sales that allowing the size and height of these buildings. We should definitely make them for rent in perpetuity.
Perpetuity?
Perpet, that, be renting. And I think that we should, if we visit in another at a later date or a different board, a different set of us, revisit it in 10 years, but I think that's more appropriate.
Ed?
Yeah, I think that you see, worked out. I have some concerns about that, and I think it's really a long discussion.
Yeah, I'd just like to have a better understanding of the rationale for doing it now or if we're doing it in 20 years, and a better, more accurate understanding of what effect it has on the number of affordable units. If it's anyway going to reduce it, which it sounds like it would, I don't see why we would want this.
It, it does reduce it, but their proposal is that it would not reduce it below what was in the host community agreement.
Right, but it's very close.
Yeah.
Bear in mind, in your numbers, just bear in mind that every rental unit in an affordable project is counted, even the not, even the market, 90 minutes.
Right.
If they convert to a for sale unit, only 25% of them.
But when they convert, there would still be 25%.
Of that building would still be affordable.
Even a for sale would still be affordable.
So, we lose 36.
So, we lose 36 of the 40, that's all we're going to be there.
There is, there is quite a housing boom starting in Littleton. The Jerky Properties coming online, there's several large, big chunks of land coming online. Littleton seems to be the in place these days, and.
That's because our school systems have done great. They have done fabulous reviews.
And last week, based on the projection, that would take us down to 20, 26% and 20 plus, and it wouldn't take many more houses.
I, I think their projection of 400 houses in the next eight years is pretty low.
Actually, Keith, can I just ask you for the numbers again? He's very familiar with the numbers.
Do you want us to put them up again? Sure, yeah. I mean, contractually, in the host community agreement, we had made the estimate that the 2010 census figure of 3,443 would be increased by the year 2020. Just keep in mind, the, the denominator for the 10% calculation changes every 10 years. And so, our projection of what the denominator would be in the year 2020 was the 2010 figure plus the then 190 units, plus the number of actual units that we accounted in the years 2011 and 2012, and the projection for 2013 and forward of, I think it was an additional 25 units per, per year. And, yeah, estimated 25.
Your projection is based on 25 new units a year?
25 new houses a year?
New, 25 new units per, units, housing units per year, in addition to the 26 that were added in 2012, the 16 that were added in 2011, 34 in 2012, plus the 190 units.
So, you're saying that in 2010, there were 26 building permits issued or housing units added to the stock?
Yes.
And in 2011, there were?
16.
16 added to the stock. You're estimating 30.
No, 34 observable in 2012, and estimate 25 per year beyond that, in addition to the 190.
So, that's what the number is.
Right, that's what.
It should, it should 10, because this proposal now is 200 versus 190.
Right.
And we had.
Oh, did you change it?
We, we ran, and we had run it out contractually anyway, in the, in the host community agreement figure. I think we, we agreed to, well, I don't have the document front of me, I think that we had agreed to base 3900, I thought.
I would suggest that based on some new properties coming on the market, that those figures are, which you wouldn't have known when you.
Well, but I, I would also, I would say, though, that those community agreement is not up for renegotiation.
I would suggest that those numbers were a little low, and to take comfort in those numbers might not be the wisest, given the change in the market recently.
Well, the, well.
But large parts of, like, tracts of land that are coming available.
Right.
The Jerky Property, I think by itself is 40, 50 units.
Yeah, 3900, as I just said, is, is our contractual estimate of what is the new denominator going to be for 2020. And, so, thanks. I would, I would agree that circumstances could change, you know, and that there could be more housing units built in the, in town than we had otherwise projected. For that reason, though, in our, in our discussions about the host community agreement, about the targets and about how do you stay above 10% in the long term, that it's, it's, it's a, it's a joint effort of this particular developer, who we have set a contractual obligation of the 100 units that we need to be able to have, if nothing else changes, that at least that, that as a result of this proposal, as adjusted in the year 2020 by the next denominator that we get in the decennial census, that, that a normal shift in, in that denominator, plus this, what they're doing at this proposal, will keep us above 10%. Okay? That's, that's on their end. On the town's end is the continuing goal of providing affordable units to meet the needs of our community. And we saw that we cannot be static. We cannot rest on our laurels. We can be in the driver's seat, though, in the future, and that is, you know, assuming we stay above 10%, as additional 40B proposals may come forward, they will be friendly for, if we, because the, the applicant will not have the right of appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee. So that, as we look at the, the needs that we have in our community, that's why we want to undertake and update the housing production plan, so that we have specific strategies of where would we want to see more affordable units, and that we will be in the driver's seat as the community about that. But, but it's not just that this, this is our forever answer to, that this proposal is the forever answer to, to staying above 10%. It is, it is one important component of staying there, but we have a lot of work to do on our own to make sure, to make sure that we stay there, to make sure that affordable units in the rest of the inventory remain affordable, and we're exploring opportunities of where do we want to have additional units at, at the towns, of the towns, to the town satisfaction, and, and so that, that's how we'll address that. But the point's well taken, that if we, if we suddenly see a lot more units and driving up that denominator more than we thought, well, then it's the town's obligations to figure out where the 10% of those will, can be affordable, some in other places.
And just mathematically, I wanted to comment that if we're at 11.53 in this model with the denominator at 38.94, that we're taking a denominator of 44.90 to keep us at 10%. That's 596 units, and that would be 85 units a year. That's a pretty aggressive growth for this town.
But I agree, they have another slide that takes 36 out of the numerator, and that brings us down to like 10.6.
The, that would be 36 out of this numerator. Want to just advance to that one?
Yeah, right there.
So, 41.30, yeah, 41.30. That means.
It's not really so many, and we're going to have more than that. We're going to have more than 25 a year.
A builder that's contemplating 25 a year plus 41.30 minus 38.4 is about.
One of my builders who built three houses last year currently has seven pieces of land in town under being it to build. And, you know, it's that kind of, and he's not the only one by any means. It's just, we're going to see some exponential growth in Littleton that we all should be aware of.
38 plus 25. It's still 38 plus 25 a year to sabotage the bottom.
Yeah. So, if they were to come back to convert that building, they would need to, at that time, present compelling reasons to do so, because we would very definitely, I think very much at risk of being under 10% in 2020 if they convert.
Well, there's, there's also no guarantee that the 10% will stay through 2020. The DHCD could change the number, too.
Before they could throw away 40Bs to die. 40Bs came up to a vote last year, they could come up to vote again.
Yeah, so, let's move to the waivers.
Well, things is 9:30. We've been out for two hours. You've said in previous meetings that you don't want any discussion going, other than not have two hours tops. I don't think the discussion of the waivers or the decisions is going to be a ten minute job. I would suggest that we do that off until the next meeting.
All right, then I would, I would accept, I would accept your critique, but I'd like to draw attention to what waivers the board are focusing on for the next meeting. That's all right. Is that okay?
There was an email that was sent out.
Yeah, the waivers?
These were made at the ad hoc meeting, two deals, and then Mr. Hale, the business. Yeah, so.
There's a different desk.
This is the one I have.
Yeah, at the ad hoc meeting, I was asked to group the waivers to the, there was a group of this for the entire project, and then that were specific to each lot. And that's, that's what I sent out today.
Okay, so, that's what I want to draw the board's attention to.
That's the number we sent out today. They're in the.
Oh, okay, so you have.
I don't see it. Do I want one?
Should be, should look like this, like today's date. Should be, should be right below the application.
So, what I wanted to point out to the board is that the waivers are grouped together, as David has just said, so that the first group of waivers is, these are waivers that apply to lots 1, 2, and 3. It'll be parking requirements, uses.
Do we have any information on what order these lots come to be dealt, please, Dr. Williams? One of the great reasons that I raise that is we had concerns back in the original permit about construction vehicles going up and down Griss Mill Road and getting them off the Griss Mill as quickly as possible. How does this change that?
So, that's, that's a condition in the decision, and I think we're only talking about changes here, so that wouldn't be a change, and so it's not.
That won't change.
No, but the construction.
That's not a waiver issue. It's still in the decision, and it will be in the new decision because it's not a change. So, so, so that's already in place. Chris, is that, we're only changing things that change, and the rest of the decision remains.
All right, so, 1 through, 1 through 27 appear to be global waivers. And I'm not sure if this red line version compares it to the old list of waivers or not.
I, I think that it does.
On the original decision?
Yes.
So, if you have the red line version, you probably can compare back to the, what used to be here on the original decision. Go ahead.
What I did is I, some of them I moved to the appropriate place, and so those show up as colored lines as well.
Yeah.
You know, I think, so I think the best.
Anyway, 1 through 27 are waivers applying to the whole project. The next grouping of waivers are waivers which apply only to the ownership portions that's phases 1 and 2. And then the final grouping are the waivers that apply to the three-story garden, four-story garden buildings. So, in terms of trying to understand what this says and, and putting your head around what waivers he's asking for, I've asked him to group these three, four-story garden buildings as separate, so you can see a separate kind of waiver from the residential park.
And I would just point out that there are very few changes to the waivers. You know, physical changes, four feet in terms of height, the size of the signed waivers is the same, so it's, it's, it's mostly about reorganization, no, no physical dimensional waivers for lots 1 and 2, no setback waivers, so I don't think there's a lot here.
I, I don't think the waiver list is going to give us as much trouble as what I heard tonight, and I think our ad hoc committee meeting last week kind of identified that for me by going through the waivers and the draft decision. I think that we sort of identified that the big issues would be the height of the building at the lower level and the placement of the affordables and the style of the affordables. And I think that this new subcommittee focusing on that is going to bring us a long way toward getting to the end of this project. There was, I don't mean to ignore it, there was a lot of comment back from Roland on those sections that we talked about that have to do with construction and building permits, and I don't know if you saw his comments back. It's fairly technical to sort of address right now at the whole board level. I think Roland and you might want to go one round and then bring it back to the, the committee that's doing the decision, because I think it was, what things have to come before what things for you to issue a building permit, Roland?
No, it was, I guess it was just the technical part of how it was written, but it was, there was restrictions in the first part of the.
There was, there was restrictions in the first part of the section, and then the last part of the section just waived that restriction. I was asking why we were doing that, why don't we just adjust the original restriction?
Right.
So something probably Town Council could take a look at.
So I didn't, I don't feel like that's a full board problem. I think it's a projecting problem that needs to be addressed first.
We can talk to Roland then.
Fine.
And what happened in the ad hoc meeting on Tuesday, Roland was present, and we brought up and asked Roland to be any suggestions on sort of this language, which ultimately that's what complicated response. What the TV, or what would he suggest to see, especially for in a enforcement or understanding at his part? I mean, we can write any document, we can get the legal team to write a document, but if the enforcement people cannot understand it, or cannot have any teeth into it, then it's going to be difficult for them.
Also, Cheryl just brought something to my attention. This waiver list is the applicant's request for waivers that this board will be discussing. Do not interpret this list as being things that was in any way breached yet. These are waivers they're requesting, and this is what I want you all to be looking at for discussion at the next meeting. Yes, yeah.
Just as for clarity, maybe, David, you could show us just lot one, two, and three, because I'm just, I'm just a little bit foggy as to reaction from all of that.
This line here, this is lot one.
Okay.
This line here, this is lot two, and this is lot three.
Thank you.
There was one other thing.
Another speed thing.
The, the fee waivers that you've requested, we need to take a look at and getting feedback overall that nobody wants to debate, but excited about that.
Well, the timing of my pocket. No waivers. Another draft decision. I think, just the construction portion, I think it's important that we, and Roland, and the leader council, and the subcommittee, understand how it's going to go, and have some backup support. So.
So you mean the subcommittee meeting before we're gonna meeting? Somebody deciding?
Bill, I don't think we, I don't think we're very far apart on the draft decision. There was some language changes in the waivers, and so we can't do anything until the waivers are voted, and then the subcommittee can go again. The comments we made about, you know, technical changes to the draft decision can be worked on now.
That, that was my question.
Yeah, that can be worked on now, but.
Additional conditions. The, the one difference that'll take some effort, but Chris is aware of it, the old project didn't have for sale units, so there are a number of conditions related to for sale units that have to get introduced into the mod, the amendment to the comprehensive.
And you sent to myself, I don't know if you got it, Bill, but it was a draft decision from another town on for sale units, to give us an idea of what to put in there, and so we can work on that. Maybe you can work on it and submit it to us.
I can read that.
Do you have anything else that we wanted to bring to the board's attention for? What else? Oh, yeah, the other thing for the next meeting that everybody should be thinking about is the developer wants flexibility in the finishing of basements, attic space, preseason rooms. And we need to just have discussion about it, because as you remember from the last meeting with Kimlock, there was a restriction on the number of usable bedrooms, and that had to do with density of the project as well as the septic system. So we need to have that in the discussion and discussion.
But in a lot of that, though, I think it's already been addressed, or, no, I'm just throwing it on the hand, that there's going to be a deed restriction, and there's going to be some title oversight, but if they add the finished basement or finished attic, and where it will not be available to the area, the documents and the plans very clearly indicate that, the building permit is very clearly indicate that. And what happens?
Just one complicating factor. The applicant has stated its concern about what the fee will be to the affordable buyers, and it's going to be based upon square footage. I don't know how the homeowners association sets those numbers, but if you're going to finish space and add space, there has to be a way to capture that square footage so that the affordable units don't end up paying a disproportionate share in terms of their square footage compared to the final square footage.
Definitely.
So we just need to know how you, we just need to know how you do that, or whether you can do a mid-course adjustment. I'm not sure you can do that. With condos, you sort of make your best estimate at the time you put the projects on the market. So that's something I would ask the board to ask Town Council to figure out.
Is that?
The applicant can figure it out.
That's even better. That's even better.
Question. Condo fees in a for sale unit, condominium unit like this, are they fees usually set ahead of time? You were talking about setting an envelope for the building, is.
Well, they're not, they're estimated, because when you sell the units, buyer's going to want to know what, what are the likely fees? So you normally would ask the applicant to provide an estimated homeowners association budget, and in the calculation of what the maximum allowable sales price would be, there was an assumption there. I think you should just ask for some backup on that, and then the homeowners association, they'll run it, they might decide to, you know, do a little bit more landscaping than was originally budgeted. I've never seen a project where condo fees are overestimated to begin with.
Is it customary, or have you heard of the case where the affordable units were assigned a certain percentage of that amount?
That's how it normally had been done, but the applicant can do it either way, based upon, the numerator is the sales price of the affordable unit divided by the total, total sales revenue, or estimated sales revenue. The other alternative is simply say, look, everybody's going to pay based upon your square footage compared to the total square footage in the project. That becomes difficult when we don't know what units are being built, let alone whether sunrooms are going to be added or basements are going to be finished.
Is it more appropriate to ask the applicant to go back to the former style you?
No, that's the applicant's decision.
Again, that's not something I could do to the management.
No, it's the applicant's decision.
Okay, still was right, we've filled as much as we can, barring the jury, tonight wants to make a motion. We have a time and date certain for the continuation hearing, January.
January 7th, at 7:30 P.M.
Yeah. And take the motion to, I mean, to.
The motion, we continue the hearing, 15th Gray Road Two, LLC Two, January 7th, 2014, at 7:30 P.M.
In favor.
All right.
Now we can take the motion.
Not until we're shocked.
I don't know after you're.
Motion to adjourn.
It's my duty to get those done.
We want our.
You're doing it.
What was the name?